Good evening and welcome to the special town meeting, which is called for this evening. We are going to be ready to begin. If at this point you can all stand, gentlemen, if you can please remove headgear as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. A couple of housekeeping points to make. The first is, although I am sure everyone has checked in, if by chance you have not, please do so. The checkers are here and more importantly, so that you can get your orange voting card for this evening's meeting. Besides that, the only other thing to mention is, in this age of technology, please be sure that your phones are on silent or on vibrate so that we will not have the anvil chorus of ringtones. Okay. Article One. I'm sorry? Oh, and it is being, thank you. And it is being broadcast for cable television. Thank you. A quorum of seventy-two are present, and again, the chair called the meeting to order at 7:07. Article One. The warrant to see if the town will vote to authorize payment of prior fiscal year invoices as follows. And they are listed. And to meet that appropriation, transfer eight hundred fifty-five dollars from free cash or take any action relative thereof. It, I'm sorry, eight eighty-five, eight hundred eighty-five dollars, recommended by the Finance Committee, recommended by the Select Board. At this point, Mr. Galante moves to authorize the town to, for payment of prior fiscal year invoices as delineated in Article One of the warrant for the special town meeting held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and incorporated by reference herein, and to meet that appropriation, transfer eight hundred eighty-five dollars from free cash, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? The chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from free cash or take from funds available, twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-two police department salaries or take any other action relative thereto. And motion is made by Ms. Young. And is there a second, seconded by Mr. Williams? Move that the town transfer twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars from free cash for police department salaries for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the article? And the chair sees none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. And the article passes unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the capital stabilization account and further will vote to transfer one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the general stabilization account or take any other action relative thereto. And this is going to be Ms. Monroe for Article Three. Ms. Monroe moves that, seconded by Mr. Williams, that the town transfer one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the capital stabilization account and further transfer one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the general stabilization account. Is there any discussion to the article? We should take this show to Congress. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. And the article passes unanimously. Article Four. Article Four, Town Center Improvements. And the chair is going to recognize Mr. Galante. Mr. Galante, seconded by Ms. Monroe. Uh, Young, sorry. Ms. Young. I move that the town authorize the Select Board to effectuate the projects and purposes as delineated in Article Four of the warrant for the special town meeting held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and incorporated by reference herein, and transfer thirty thousand dollars from free cash to fund said purposes. Is there any discussion to the article? The chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article Five, CPA Debt. And Article Five, the chair recognizes Mr. Perego, seconded by Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, and thank you. And Mr. Perego moves that the town transfer thirty-three thousand one hundred forty-two dollars from accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve to fund the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual debt service obligation for the playground improvement project as previously approved under Article Eighteen of the June twenty-third, twenty twenty, Annual Meeting. Is there any discussion to the article? Any discussion to the article? The chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article Six. Article Six, CPA Historic Church Building Preservation. The chair is going to recognize Mr. Williams for the motion. Is there a second, seconded by Ms. Young? Thank you. Mr. Williams, I move that the town appropriate one hundred thousand dollars to preserve and rehabilitate the exterior of the Historic Evangelical Church of Hubbardston by funding the removal of the old wood siding and replacement with plank composite system siding, including bell tower and door and window trim, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and meet this appropriation by transferring fifteen thousand dollars from accrued Community Preservation Act Historic Reserve Funds and eighty-five thousand dollars from accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve Funds. This grant is conditioned upon the church providing a structural engineering report to the Community Preservation Act Committee and Select Board stating that the church building is structurally sound upon the recording of a historic preservation restriction and the signing of a grant agreement, all prior to the commencement of any work. Is there any discussion to the article? Please. Again, before the video, please be sure to state your name and address.
Bella Caldera, twelve Simon Hill Road. Haven't we heard this before? How many times has this come up? Like, five times or so? I am categorically opposed to using taxpayer money to fix a church or house of worship. My house of worship doesn't need any paint. Who would paint the sky? So, as far as evangelicals go, they're always talking about money. Why don't you ask Benny Hind or Joel Osteen for money to paint your church? If you don't have enough parishioners to take care of your own building, well then, deed it to the town. And, um, and we'll take care of it then. But where does CPA money come from? Well, that says it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak to the article?
Susan Worth, sixty-six Root Road. In full disclosure, I am a member of the Community Preservation Committee. Okay. I am a member of the Community Preservation Committee, the Open Space Committee, and a member of the Historical Society. But right now, I am speaking to you now as a citizen. This citizen sees a problem, the deteriorated condition of the exterior of the Historic Church Building on Main Street. This citizen sees a solution, long-lasting composite siding. And using Community Preservation Act funds, the exterior of the building can be restored. We can solve this problem. And better yet, we're not alone. The solution is a partnership. More on that in just a moment. But to be clear, your taxes will not go up due to passing this article. Using accrued funds in the Historic and Undesignated Reserve Community Preservation Act accounts, we can fund this article with cash, and no debt will be incurred by the town. Currently CPA, two loans are currently being repaid from CPA monies. The library roof debt will be retired in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and the playground debt will be retired in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Obviously, these obligations are prioritized and factored into the fiscal year budget process. As a matter of fact, we just passed one of five on the playground debt, the thirty-three-plus-thousand. Earlier, I mentioned a partnership. The total cost of this rehabilitation project is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. The CPA hundred thousand represents two-thirds of the project, with the church assuming responsibility for other, the other one-third, and the cost of the structural analysis report. Everybody has some skin in the game, working toward the public benefit goal of restoring civic pride in our north downtown village, especially since our downtown project will be culminating this next spring, summer, fall. The church, the church building, is a focal point in town. It's a landmark. It's one of just a few remaining historic buildings that we have. If it's not rehabilitated now or in the near future, what will become of it? Please support Article Six.
Thank you. Any further debate? Sir?
Yeah, I'm Gary Kangis, Chairman of the Historical Commission of Town. And knowing the history of the town, the Unitarian Church was the first town meeting house, built in seventeen seventy-three, I believe. And eighteen twenty-seven, the church had a split, and they built the second town meeting house, which is the Ian Evangelical Church on the other end of Main Street. So as Chairman, my committee is full and unanimously voted to fund this project and see it through, and we think that's a piece of Hubbardston history that, present and past, that it should be restored.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
Hi, I'm Alice Livedall, and I'm a little more Jefferson Road. I'm on the CPA. I just want to point out that this is not, this is being restored as a historic building. And it's the fact that it is a church is common in Massachusetts. If you look at the, the use of CPA money to preserve historic buildings, a large, it's very common. A lot of the historic buildings in Massachusetts are churches. So I wanted to point that out, and also to point out that the history of...
Microphone.
Nope, you can't hear me. Sorry, is that better?
Better.
Okay. And Gary could tell you more, but there are very few historic buildings in town, and the CPA has been attentive to them as well. We helped with the Unitarian Church roof. We, the Williamsville Church on Burnshirt Road was turned over to the Historical Commission, and historical and CPA funds were used to restore it as well. So it's not a precedent, this is not particularly a precedent. And we did get a recent opinion from Town Council about this project, and it is a permitted use for that purpose. And then I'd also like to, to just point out that the owner of the evangelical church is not the people that go to a congregational meet, you know, to the meeting on Sundays. The church, that church, the Evangelical Church of Hubbardston, is, is owns the church. It's been deeded that way since nineteen forty-one. And so a church's governing body can act on its behalf, but it doesn't own the church. And if it were to sell, try to sell it, they would have to go to the Attorney General and deal with the Division of Nonprofit Organizations and Public Charities, and they would have to find a buyer that was either a church, or they would have to, or a comparable, suitable nonprofit charitable entity. So, so this, this church has historically been a church since eighteen twenty-seven, and it's passed through a number of congregations, but it's not that the present people own the church. So I wanted to spell that notion. I also want to point out that there is a right of reverter in the deed, which might or might not be enforceable, that says if it ceases to be used as a church, as a deed to the land, then it goes back to the original heirs of the original grantor of the land. And while I don't know whether that would be enforceable today, it would certainly be an impairment in the restriction, in the title would be, that would have to be overcome, a very significant one. And it would also, I think, the Attorney General would really take into account that this is a building that's been continuously used for almost two hundred years as a church, and would be very reluctant to allow it to be turned into anything else if there was a possibility that there was an active congregation that wanted it. So what can we do? I think, I just want to point out, we're protected by mass law, the Attorney General, we're protected by this deed restriction, and then our preservation restriction that we put in, which it goes with all of these projects, obligates those who own it in the future to preserve it in the same way it runs with the land. So I just wanted to make, point out some of those things, and I also wanted to point out that, that there were more buildings, historic buildings on the end of West Main that were consumed in a huge fire, and that's the only one that remains. And that's why there's so few historic buildings. Back in nineteen twenty-seven, I believe, a big inn, the big meeting hall, five historic homes. So this is, I think, worth preserving, and that was the thought of the CPA on this. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. I'm sorry. Oh, beg your pardon.
I'm sorry. Mary Southwick, twenty Williamsville Road. I guess the miscommunication of historic preservation, to me, is when you restore a historic building, you restore it to its history. So by using siding or different types of material on a building, you're not making it the historical. So I guess we need clarification on that, is, is that you don't agree that it has to be to the T of that building. You just want it repaired and keep the look that it has, but you're not, like, maybe in the cities, they tend to be more restricted because they have more money.
So again, debate is, is always through the chair. So that is your question. Let's see, does anyone want to reply to the, to the question of the lady? Okay. If you'll step aside, ma'am, please.
She's raised a very good point. When you restore, rehabilitate, those words can have different meanings, but in their inimitable wisdom, the National Park Service, the U.S. Department of the Interior, under Preservation Briefs Number Eight, talks about aluminum and vinyl siding on historic buildings. They would prefer that everything would be back to perfect the way it was. Probably that wood is chestnut. You can't even get chestnut anymore, and it won't take paint. It's, the last time it was worked on was nineteen sixty. I have it in the book right over here. We can talk. Okay. Anyway, so to get back to the aluminum and vinyl siding on historic buildings, they, here it's under Section Four, it says, "Replace severely damaged or deteriorated historic materials and features and kind." That's preferable, but if you can't do it, because this approach is not always feasible, provision is made under the recommended treatment options in the guidelines that accompany the Secretary of the Interior standards to consider the use of a compatible substitute material. A substitute material should only be considered, however, if the form detailing an overall appearance of the substitute material conveys the visual appearance of the historic material. And the application of a substitute material does not damage, destroy, or obscure historic features. In other words, they realize that sometimes you can't restore it perfectly the way it was. There's a sample out in the hallway. I could show you the material, and then there was another question you had.
Okay, excuse me, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't, I should address you.
No, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's right here, and as far as the last time it was restored, in the Sullivan Book, it was nineteen sixty, and the church painted it themselves.
Thank you. Okay. Ma'am, go right ahead.
Just to follow up on the building being painted, in nineteen eighty-nine, it was, we began painting the building, repainting it. And then a few years later, or in between, say, five years, within five years, painters came, scraped it all, and repainted the whole building. So it was taken care of, inside and out, for several years. And I just question the price that you're going to pay because they said there's lead paint. Lead paint hasn't been sold since the sixties. So there's no lead paint on that building that, as of, say, eighty-nine, the beginning of eighty-nine. And there could be some residue. I'm just saying that you may be wasting some money by being told there's lead paint. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. At this point, the, the chair is going to recognize, for the purpose of addressing the special town meeting, Mary Bellotti, who is the pastor of the Evangelical Church of Hubbardston. Pastor, if you can please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and the floor will be yours.
Hi, my name is Mary Bellotti, and I am presently residing in Worcester. Hope to move out to Hubbardston before too long. Just to address the issue about the lead paint, we were told that we needed a certified, state-certified inspector to come to the building and do a complete inspection of the exterior. We had that done last June and have the paperwork that states that there is dangerous levels of lead paint on all of the exterior of the building. That was done by an inspector, a state inspector. So although they may have scraped and removed as much as they could, unfortunately, residue will remain, and it still is a hazard, according to the state regulations. By siding the building, we're literally removing a huge portion of that residue by taking the old clapboards off and replacing with the new siding. So it will actually solve that issue in the long run. I'd like to thank everyone here tonight for coming out and supporting us. This is a great town. I've met a lot of nice people in the process of this through many different channels and, and people who've come to the church and the boards that we've worked with and talked with, and I have to say, you people are very fortunate to have a town and people in this town that really care so much, and they have investigated, they've worked hard to make sure that, you know, what we're embarking on in this project is done correctly. We do have a structural engineer that is set up to come, we hope, within the next few weeks. All things that they're requesting will be accomplished. We want to be good stewards of a building that the Lord has provided for us to worship and for the town to come and worship, and for anyone to come in and walk in, and thank God. So we're grateful for the time and all the energies tonight, and appreciate you all.
Thank you, Pastor. Any further discussion to the article?
My name's Scott Bischoff. I, I actually reside here in Hubbardston at the church. I'm that guy. I also pastor with Mary. It's a pleasure to be here in Hubbardston. I've been here for a number of years. I wanted to get up and say that one of the biggest reasons why we chose this particular product is because throughout Massachusetts, there's been numerous church buildings that are historic, that have used this particular product to restore their exterior. So when we found this product and we found that it's been used on other church buildings similar to what we have here, and it worked well for them, it preserved the same look, and it was cost-effective, we decided that we would try it as well. And I just wanted to get up and say that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bless everyone. Thank you for talking.
Anyone else? Anyone else? The chair sees none, and so, all in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card, and the chair will count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Twelve opposed. Thank you, and the article passes. Article Seven. Article Seven. Mr. Shea. Okay, excuse me. Mr. Shea, if you want to come to the microphone, please, and if you can just state your name and your address, please.
I shall. Bill Shea, fifty-one Morgan Road. I would like to make a motion to pass over Article Seven.
Okay. At this point, ladies and gentlemen, according to town bylaws, before the motion to pass over can be entertained by the chair, it first, it first requires that there be a motion to pass the article, and that will require a second, at which point the chair will recognize Mr. Shea, who is going to discuss not only the article but also his, his subsidiary motion to pass over. Okay? Just so that everyone is clear from a procedural point of view, what is happening and why. Any, any questions? Mr. Williams? Oh, okay, Mr. Williams, I think, is waiting in the wings with the ever-ready second. At this point, the chair recognizes Mr. Shea. Mr. Shea moves that the town appropriate and transfer fifteen thousand dollars from accrued Community Preservation Act Historic Reserve to fund the restoration of monuments and cannons on the historic park, seconded by Mr. Williams. Under discussion, the chair recognizes Mr. Shea.
Thank you. A little bit of background, I am the chairman of the Hubbardston Vietnam Veterans Memorial Committee. We have seven very active members. We originally were formed back in March, and our goal was to build a monument to honor Hubbardston's Vietnam-era veterans. We established a goal of approximately forty thousand dollars to accomplish that. And in addition to our original charter, when we really did an investigation of all the other memorials and monuments in the center of town, we realized that they were in need of restoration, repair, and potentially replacement. The eagle on top of the Civil War Memorial is missing his head, and the monuments are in desperate need of restoration and repair. So we embraced the opportunity at the same time to build this monument to our Hubbardston Vietnam veterans and also encompass the... Vietnam veterans and also encompass the other work. Due to the generosity of the citizens of Hubbardston and some from area communities and also companies and employers, I am very proud to say that as of last night, the unofficial total is $38,900 and counting. We have also, with the acceptance of the Board of Selectmen, reached out and asked for bids. We accepted bids, and last night, the selectmen approved the bid to build what we consider to be a beautiful memorial to our Vietnam-era veterans. It will be very close, representing the Black Marble that we have in Washington, D.C. And we have done a tremendous amount of outreach to be sure. We do our very best to identify Hubbardston Vietnam-era veterans. And this would include people who lived in the town before, during, or moved to the town after. We anticipated from the records that that would be approximately between 75 and 100. We are now over 200 Vietnam-era veterans. So this memorial will be large enough to include all of those names. And although we're doing our best, we know that we will probably have not reached some, and so there will be an area on the memorial so that we'll be able to add those names. And our goal when we set out in March was to have the design and the funding in place by Veterans Day in 2021. I'm very happy to say the design, the bids, the acceptance have all taken place. And as of tomorrow afternoon, I encourage you to drive by the Common. Right now, we have a sign there, but we're going to have a 10-foot banner, and you'll have a pretty good idea of what this monument is going to look like. One of the things that Vietnam veterans never got when they came home was welcome home. Our memorial is going to say welcome home. The names are going to be on both sides. They're going to be a full inch in height, and that is larger than any other of the memorials we have in town, so we're very proud of that. On the backside, it's going to say, "All gave some, some gave all," in a scroll. So I think you're going to be very pleased with what you see. The bid came in at $21,100. So we now have, that is for the monument, it's approximately $2,000 to have it set up. And we now have excess funds to take care of the repair, restoration, and replacement of all the other monuments and memorials within the generosity of the donations that have been made. We also have money put aside for what we anticipate will be those extra names that have to be engraved. We're very confident in the company that has been hired to do it, and we're going to have samples in pretty soon, which we will approve every step along the way to ensure that we're going to have a quality product to honor our veteran community. Over and above that, we may have additional funds, and we're going to do our very best to place those in a fashion that will also do honor to our veteran population. So with that in mind, do the math, and that doesn't mean that if you don't want, if you still want to make a donation, you're welcome to do that. But I'm pleased to say that we did not have to beg, borrow, or steal, or ask for additional funds, and that's why our committee has asked to pass over the generosity of the CPC and that $15,000 grant.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Mr. Shea moves to pass over Article seven, seconded by, okay, Ms. Monroe and Mr. Williams. And at this point, the motion is to pass over Article seven. Is there any discussion to the motion to pass over? All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. And the motion to pass over passes unanimously. At this point, for the sake of the record, the chair will request, by unanimous consent, to address the topic very, very briefly with no objection. Thank you. Every generation has its leaders, and we are fortunate in this town to have a man who gives of his time and of his treasure in our fellow townsman, Bill Shea. Bill, I know you don't do it alone, but on behalf of the town meeting, expressed in a round of applause, we thank you. Having opened the dam of commentary, Mr. Galante?
Yeah, sorry to do this. And I'm not going to try to make everybody clap one more time, but this is a little bit different side of this. So I just, I would like to commend Bill and the committee, they, for what you can do when you start a committee like this. They came at, you know, a couple of virtual meetings to us. They organized themselves an extremely strong committee that got together with purpose, with goals. They ran into a few problems along the way. They dealt with them across the board. They kept coming with clear information and research every single time they came to it and followed through. So I just wanted to say, if there's a model on how to do, you know, a certain task in towns like ours in forming a committee, it was this. So, thanks.
Oh, wise man. Thank you, Mr. Galante. And now we are going to move ahead to the last article on the warrant, and that is Article eight. And at this point, Mr. Perrigo is going to move that the town amend the zoning bylaws as delineated in Article eight of the warrant of the special town meeting held on October 19th, 2021, and incorporated by reference herein. The planning board is required to give a brief report as per the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5. So, Mr. Perrigo moves. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Young. Under discussion, the chair is going to recognize the chair of the planning board to give her report. And I think you'll have to adjust that.
Carol being short. Anyway, I'm Alice Liddell again, 96 Mount Jefferson Road. We, this bylaw, if you, if you look at how it's printed, the underlined are the changes, right? So basically, it doesn't change any of the tiers of marijuana that are allowed, and it's not, we anticipate further amendments, but what it does do is it establishes a minimum lot size of five acres for a commercial marijuana facility and a setback of 100 feet from side yards. And the reason we're requesting this is because there were no setbacks in the law that was passed by the previous town, town meeting. And we learned from the projects that came before us, our board this year, is that with no setbacks, you could, and the required fencing, you wind up with six-to-eight-foot fencing with either barbed wire or razor wire on the top as a security measure right on the lot line. Because, of course, our setbacks and our bylaws don't apply generally to fencing. You can generally fence your lot at the lot line, right? So it's just a major oversight. And then the other thing we learned, in the bylaw, we thought, and the other thing we learned is that the tier size relates to canopy, it does not relate to the ground cover. So if you have, for example, we allow a 10,000-square-foot canopy in a residential zone, but that would take between at least 20,000 square feet if you put the rows and the planting. And at that point, you're up to covering with our two-acre lots at least a quarter of the lot. And we just thought, nobody really wants to have our ordinary two-acre lots half-covered with marijuana facilities and high fences. So this is a stopgap measure. We're asking you to consider here a five-acre lot minimum and a setback of 100 feet from all sides.
Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me, before the chair recognizes you, you did hold a hearing. Do you happen to remember when that, that hearing was held?
We did hear a small hearing, but I can't off my, off my head do that, Dave.
Mr. Monroe?
It was September 16th.
Again, excuse me, for the record, if you'll please state your name and your address.
Christopher, oh, thanks, Alice. Christopher Monroe, Grimes Road. The planning board did hold a public hearing on this matter on 9/16, and the vote was unanimous in support of from the attending members.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor, is that all right? Thank you very much. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you very much.
No problem. My name is Laura Foley, and I'm from 12 Pitcherville Road. I have questions on lines 22.4.5 and minimum lot size. First question, and I'll ask them all, and then you can address them. The first question is, are these changes retroactive to the cannabis businesses that have already become established in town? And the second question is that it seems excessive, and I'm thinking of the facility that is near a time and a place across from the Pizza Palace. And in order, if they weren't already there and they were just coming into the property, their fencing would likely have to be 20 or 50 feet high because their buildings are very far back from the road. And the wording of this is that the, every aspect of the marijuana establishment has to be shielded from public and private view. That seems like a huge overreach and a burdensome law to follow. And I guess I lied. There is one more thing. For a five-acre lot, if there is a cannabis retail operation, that seems like a lot of property for a store.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone who would like to address those, those questions?
Yes, I can address these questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Monroe.
The reason the board put this forward is not to address the commercial district, which is where those two, two businesses are that were previously referenced. Those businesses are in the commercial district, and they're subject to different restrictions. This is really to address what we see as a problem with what can currently happen in residential agricultural zoning. Now, Hubbardston is almost entirely zoned in that district. There's only a small strip of commercial zoning that runs from around downtown to where the current marijuana businesses are. Other than that, pretty much the rest of the town is residential agricultural. So to think through what we're trying to avoid here is, under the current rule that we have structured, you can put a, a commercial marijuana grow facility in essentially a residential neighborhood. And we have a two-acre lot size, and as Alice had said earlier, when you look at 5,000 square feet, or really 10,000 square feet of canopy, which is what is currently allowable in a residential zoned area in this town, you're talking about a grow area that's at least a quarter to half of the property. And we're, we're trying to avoid that, where we're not trying to place unreasonable restrictions on all marijuana businesses. The board has actually discussed doing a, a more sensible reform to the bylaw that we currently have, because we've learned a lot that in the, the last couple of projects that have come before the committee, there's questions that nobody would have known of when they were drafting the original one. So the goal with this current proposal is to make it so we can really stop that problem of somebody potentially being able to put a marijuana grow facility that takes up half a residential lot in a residential neighborhood while we work through and come up with a more sensible approach to doing it where we incorporate feedback from industry and from the townspeople.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. How about in the back?
Hi, everybody. My name's Rosie. I live on Brigham Street in Hubbardston. This is my first town meeting, very excited. Thanks for letting me talk. I, full disclosure, am not a farmer, so I don't know a lot about that, but I can tell you, when we moved here several years ago, I was excited to meet my neighbors, and I was excited they didn't have ugly fencing. So among the other things that concern me with this proposed changes, where like the speaker before me, I believe they're a little too restrictive. First of all, this seems to say that it's applicable to all districts, not just the commercial district, or at least that's the way I'm reading it here. So that concerned me as well, because I think one of the other speakers said it only applied in residential areas, but this seems to suggest it applies to all districts. I think that the current regulations that you all came up with before were pretty comprehensive. I think if my neighbor both had an ugly fence and a bunch of pigs right on my property line, there's nothing I could do about it. I don't know why everyone's so concerned with cannabis growing all over someone's property. If they were growing corn or had animals, I don't believe, and again, that's where my ignorance on farming comes in, I don't believe there's any rules on that. So my neighbor next door could have those things, and that's okay, but this isn't okay. So I do feel like this is being unfairly targeted, and I think a minimum lot size of five acres is a little aggressive. I think that might encourage only certain types of people to come into our community, and I'm concerned that it doesn't make it more accessible for other people to come here and farm and bring more people to the town. So thanks for hearing me.
And before you leave, again, for the record, your last name, please.
Oh, sorry. Rosie Milano, like the cookie. Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And welcome.
Donna Russell from Street Road. I guess I'm going to kind of speak to what she just said. I have done some walking around my areas and not right near my home, and from the road, not that I can see it visibly, but I can smell the marijuana that people are growing. And in order for it to be not impeding on my enjoyment of my walking, I'll admit I am against having a lot of marijuana things. I believe it is still federally illegal as a controlled substance, and I work in the medical field, and I do know there are a lot of effects that people don't realize are actually happening to them. Lot of side effects, long-lasting. So in order to have it not bother me and a lot of other residents, and children especially, I feel that having it as far away from where most of the public would go is very important. So having the setbacks available as far as the screening, I think, is the best thing that we can do at this point.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I just wanted to, wanted to answer the point that with a bylaw, a zoning bylaw passes, it does not apply retroactively, so it wouldn't affect the two projects in town. And I also want to point out that in terms of the individual person's right to grow marijuana, they can do that. This is, they can do six plants a person up to, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's six plants a person, I believe, and up to 12 maybe with two people or, this is commercial marijuana growing. This is a horse of a different color. Okay? And I also did want to say the other thing, we were concerned about odor traveling. We're doing a lot about odor on this, and so that's one of the reasons for the setback. I just want to clarify those points. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Sir, in the back.
Jim Ellis, 21 Seminole Ave. Quick question, does these, do they?
Do these regulations apply to indoor marijuana-growing facilities? I've heard talk about people bringing in storage containers and doing grow lights, and I don't know if this applies to that or not. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
This is a, really an outdoor grow bylaw. If, and this is, the town has to permit it, right? So this is all we're permitting is outdoor grow. Now, there is a line, where do greenhouses become outdoor grow? But no, we do not permit the big commercial indoor grow facilities.
Thank you. Any further discussion as far as the article? The chair hears none. All in favor of the article, please signify by raising your card. Two-thirds vote, yes, thank you. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. The chair will count the negative votes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine, 10, sorry, 10. Thank you. And the article passes. Thank you very much, having met the quantum necessary. So thank you. The article passes. At this point in time, town council, are we all set? Mr. Nixon, are we all set? Thank you. At this point in time, it is by the chair's watch 7:58, and the chair declares the special town meeting adjourned.